People coming on here, welcome everybody. We are recording, just so you know, just so that makes it so we can send the link of this presentation to those who are not able to be with us today. We're going to start with prayer here in a moment, but I just want to kind of give you a little preview of what we're discussing today. So this is our, you know, bi-monthly town hall. Some of you may have been to our last one, and today we have sort of two topics. The lifelong formation team did some work on helping us revisit the directory for catechesis and it really connects nicely to renew my church and some of the themes we should be thinking about in catechesis and kind of just preparing our mentality for what renewing catechesis might look like and faith formation in general. And we're just very conscious of the fact that that came out, I think, May or June of 2020. So it was came out right. You're all obviously had other things on our minds, be a just kind of surviving and pivoting, as we like to say during those times. So we're going to focus on that. And then Nick Carlson from Vicariat III, Lifelong Formation Coordinator, is going to lead a reflection related to building the new reality and renew my church by continuing what we had started last time around. And then we'll have time for a question and answer here at the end. So hopefully that sounds good. And I'm going to turn it over to Emily McDonnell in our office. You might know her as working in a lot of child and youth programs, and she's going to lead us in prayer today.
Good afternoon, everybody. Alright, so like Kevin said, I'm going to lead us in prayer today, so if we can just take a moment to quiet our minds and put ourselves in a prayerful place. Alright, you should be seeing the prayer now. Okay, so in the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit, amen. This is from Psalm 62. My soul be at rest in God alone, from whom comes my hope. God alone is my rock and my salvation, my fortress I shall not fall. My deliverance and honor are with God, my strong rock, my refuge is with God. Trust God at all times, my people. Pour out your hearts to God, our refuge. And we're just going to take a minute to reflect on this passage from the Psalms, whatever jumps out to you. I have some music in the background here as we reflect for a minute. We're not going to share, we're just going to reflect, and then we'll have a closing prayer at the end. Alright, and so I'll have us close with this closing prayer. So, dear Lord, sometimes it seems like it is all too much. The demands placed on me, the criticisms of others, the exhaustion that comes from my work and living in our world, and the discouragement when I fail to see your mission alive in the hearts of both myself and others. No matter what is raining down on me, I need to find refuge in you. I find refuge in you, refuge in you, to hide in your shade, to seek your shelter, to turn to you when I need to find hope. When I wonder if I can still go on, I seek the refuge you alone can give. Help me to continue to find hope in the hard times as I cling to you. Help my soul to find rest in you, who alone is my rock and my salvation. We ask all this in your name, amen. In the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit.
Thank you, Emily. So now I'm going to kick it over to Chelsea Baldwin, our Senior Coordinator for Youth Ministry in the Office of Lifelong Formation, and she's going to lead our first presentation today.
Okay. Hey, everyone. I'm Chelsea Baldwin. I'm the Senior Coordinator for Youth Ministry. If I don't already know you, I'm very excited to introduce myself. So I'm going to share my screen real quick. Okay. Does this look good? Can everyone see?
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Okay. Alright, so we're talking about the new directory for catechesis today. Um, we're really excited to talk about this and what we can kind of do with it for you. So like Kevin was saying, in July 2020, the USCCB put out a new directory for catechesis. Probably a lot of you are familiar with the old one, which is the one with the mosaic of Jesus Christ on the front. The last directory that came out was in 2005, so it was very important that they updated it. And it's interesting because it's very much written and updated in the era of Francis. Where we can see there's a lot of quotations from Pope Francis, Evangelium, and it's very evangelism oriented. And it really sees catechesis as just another extension, catechesis and evangelism working hand in hand. But the thing is, the book, the new directory is almost 300 pages long. So we thought we would read it for you and kind of pick out some things that we thought were interesting and helpful so that you guys would have a better idea of what was going on. Um, so let me just, I'm sorry, hold on just a moment. Okay. Alright. Next slide. Alright, so we wrote a parish ministry reflection guide for you, which we're very excited. It will be in the chat soon. But this is what it looks like. So we went through the directory of catechesis. We picked out a couple of sections we thought were really important, especially valuable for what the public work we're doing, or the type of things that we're doing in the search dioceses. The kind of guiding quote we used was, "The need for renewed impulse of evangelization justifies the decision to rethink in a missionary vein all the pastoral activities of the Christian community, even the most ordinary and traditional ones," which is what we are often. We talk about catechesis as something that the church has been doing for a long time. So where it's interesting because it's always something the church has done and continues to do, but we can think about it in new and different ways. So we wrote you this parish reflection guide based on this part of the new directory. We want to just clarify what it's not. Um, so this parish reflection guide we're sending out for you, it's not officially part of Renew My Church, Building the New Reality. It fits under it, it's in the spirit of it, but it's not official document put out like with BNR. So no need to stress about that. We, we do believe it will help if you're in the BNR process or you're getting there or you're, but we don't think it's necessary. And it's not an assessment. It's not mandatory. We're not, we're not collecting it. You don't have to turn it in. It's basically just a tool for you to use. We just really wanted to give you the opportunity to reflect on your own ministry and how it kind of fits in with the direction the US bishops are going for catechesis. So on that note, I'm just going to introduce real quick. Um, the directory itself has kind of three pieces of framework I want, we want to highlight, and we highlighted in the resource guide we sent you. So the three things are charismatic catechesis. Well, I'll just go over that one first. So charismatic catechesis. Charigma is a Greek word that hopefully you know or you've heard. If you haven't and you haven't started Renew My Church yet, you definitely will hear it. Charigma is a Greek word. It means proclamation and is the most basic, basic proclamation of our faith. The life, death, and resurrection of Jesus Christ. It's the most central thing to what we do. So charismatic catechesis means just catechesis in the vein of the charigma. A lot of times we think of talking to people about Jesus, about Christ becoming incarnate, about teaching, about dying for our sins, and offering a place in heaven as sort of like the first thing we talk about, or a very elementary part of our faith, which it is. But it's not just a beginning that we have to get past. It's something that the, the directory really feels like needs to imbue every part of what we do and how we teach. So that's a very important framework, piece of framework going through. Next is, here we go. Ooh, too far. Alright. Catechesis participates according to its own nature in the effort of evangelization. Long way of saying that, just to remind us that we are forming missionary disciples. So a lot of times we can get really focused on whatever our particular ministry is, whether it's evangelizing or it's, you know, teaching children, whether it's RCIA, whether it's adults, whether it's teenagers, we can get really focused on our program, what we're doing, what our people need to know to get to the next stage. But we, and sometimes we have to remind ourselves, we have to zoom out a little bit. There's catechesis, whatever we're doing, whatever we're teaching is part of a larger effort of evangelization. It's part of helping a person, whoever it is, in our, in our community become more of a Christian, become a stronger Christian, very disciple, which is a very common phrase we're going to hear in Renew My Church. And then lastly, the third part of the framework we thought you should be aware of is catechesis being at the service of ongoing education in faith. So you're forming a whole person, and we're trying to help the person to see how everything in the church connects, right? We're not, while we often separate things in discreet units, right? I do catechesis, I don't do liturgy, right? As, you know, as Catholics, we know that liturgy is an important component of anything we do, and it often has a catechetical aspect, or especially if we are in catechesis and you're preparing kids for confirmation, or you're preparing adults for RCA baptism, or for the adult sacraments. Liturgy is a part of that, so that we're not separating things for people, but that they can see it as part of a whole. So a little bit more, we focused in on chapter nine of the directory for catechesis. So all these components have questions. So there's three kind of components we wanted to highlight. But they all have questions attached to help you kind of reflect. The big things that we thought were important for the catechesis in particular churches, which is what we are, parishes, is just a way of saying it. The first is we are a community of missionary disciples. So if you think about your parish staff or your people who work here, parish pastor, associate pastors, pastoral associates, catechesis directors, religious ed coordinators, youth minister, everyone who is on your parish staff. We, we are all people who are called to be here because Christ loved us first, right? As 1 John, chapter four says, we're all called to this. And a lot of times we can get really caught up, I know I can get caught up in the particularities or the nuances or a program, when really we have to remember that we're here because like the incredible privilege of witnessing to God's people. So if you think of your parish, you know, you're, you're at your next parish staff meeting, what, you know, looking around and remembering everyone is here because God has called them very particularly to this community, and Christ loves them. So how are you as a pastoral council or a pastoral team, a community of missionary disciples? Is that something that you guys kind of think about, reflect on as you plan things, as you talk about your parish? Okay, second part is a missionary mentality. So now that we know who we are, right? We are people called by Christ. The directory really wants to highlight that we are always missionaries, and that we are people who should have a missionary heart, which means just going out to people and sharing the good news, sharing that charigma with people to bear witness to the faith. If we think about the ways that the earliest missionaries in the church did, so people like Saint Augustine of Hippo, or saints Cyril Methodius, or Saint Francis Xavier going to, going to Japan, those people, they didn't have, you know, they didn't come with a textbook or curriculum. They came with the Holy Spirit, and they came with, with a sincere belief that they needed to preach the gospel. So we need to remember that when we start, we plan our own, our own ministries, it doesn't mean that we don't plan anything, or we just kind of wing it. What it means is that we need to recall that the heart of everything, we are, we are bringing the good news of Jesus to people. And then the third part from the directory we thought was important was they really suggest that the faith formations, we programs that we do be inspired by the catechumenate. So catechumenate refers to people who often as adults are coming into the church. So people who are in RCA programs. So we'd say like adults who are getting baptized at Easter. That since the Second Vatican Council, the catechumenate, the sort of RCIA model has been sort of the the way that the church often thinks about how we want to bring people deeper into communion. So it's not necessarily that you need to stop whatever you're doing and start doing rites of election or something like that. But there's a particular way, if it's done really well, that RCIA catechizes people, where it's not just about making sure they know everything, they have all the facts in order, that we are accompanying people on this journey together, that we are, we're speaking not only to their, their head, but their heart, that we're teaching them how to pray. It's not all intellectual. Those are the big components we thought were important, these three that are part of the new director of catechesis. So each of these, these three parts in the document we're going to give you has a bunch of questions that go with it. So for you to kind of reflect, how is my program, how is my ministry, how is my parish living out missionary mentality? How are our programs fit, you know, like how are they inspired by the catechumenate, that sort of thing? So Deb is going to put the document in the chat right now. Okay, see your face. So Deb is putting the document in the chat right now. It's four and a half pages. Just a reminder that this is a just reflection guide on the new directory for catechesis. So it's a tool for you to use in your parish. It's, our thought was that you kind of spend some time praying and reflecting, and maybe then take it to your pastor, use it to plan your goals for the next year to outline some curricula. It is not supposed to be something that you then, you know, Nick Carlson is going to call you and say, where is your, you know, direct, I need it back. This is just something for you to use and start conversations, prayer in your own hearts. It's going to be in a bunch of subsequent emails. So when we send out the recording of this webinar and anything else, it'll be in there, it'll be in the next, it'll be in the next newsletter that we send out. We're just hoping that you can use this opportunity. The new directory is so beautiful. There's so much good stuff in it. We wanted to break open a particular part of it so that you could be well acquainted with it. Because yeah, it's a long document, and we want to make sure that you're getting the good stuff out of it. So are there any questions I can answer real quick before we move on?
Chelsea, do you want either myself or you to just share the document so they can see what it looks like?
Oh, yeah, sure. If you don't mind doing that.
I can do it, yeah.
Thank you.
So you should have access to this now in the chat, thanks to Deb. But this is the document that Chelsea just kind of broke down for us very beautifully. This, like we said, was kind of at the beginning, just a short summary of some of the important parts of this directory that we wanted to highlight. But then the part that we think will be really helpful for you is these three areas Chelsea was talking about, community and missionary discipleship, disciples, sorry, missionary mentality, and then formative offerings inspired by the catechumenate. All have a little summary, and then these reflection questions.
Yeah, we tried to include a lot of paragraphs out of that, like quotes, like two paragraphs in the directory. So if you're like, oh, that's really interesting. I want to read more about that. You can definitely pick up your copy and flip to the paragraph number. If you don't own a copy, you can order one on the USCCB website.
Great. And I will stop sharing. I just wanted the first time you see it, not to be by yourself, just so you know what you're looking at.
Okay, well, thank you, Chelsea and Emily for presenting that and for the whole team for working on it. I just wanted, before we kick over to Nick, just highlight a few things. First of all, in a practical manner, I would just recommend clicking those links now and having them open in your tab, so you still have that available when the meeting ends. And then you can download those PDFs. I don't know if it was noted, but there's two links because there's an English and a Spanish version of this document. So it's the same document in both languages. And, you know, just to affirm that I was actually meeting with, I was in a meeting with Beth White, who many of you know as the Director of Evangelization and Missionary Discipleship, and I was mentioning, we were presenting this at the town hall. And she was really happy and supportive of it and affirming of the idea that a lot of these themes that are in the new directory for catechesis are really well aligned with where we're going with Renew My Church. So no matter where you are in the process, and as the team said, you know, even though it's not a formal part of the Renew My Church process, no matter where you are, being able to reflect on these questions of missionary discipleship and the community that we're building and a charigma, it's just really relevant to, you know, where we're all trying to go as a church. And hopefully it's really affirming that, you know, the global church is trying to move in this direction. And in a lot of ways, our church is a leader in trying to make that a practical reality, but this is all in line with where the vision of the church is in terms of where we need to go to really engage and reengage and re-inspire people and just, you know, adapt our catechesis to the world people are living in and their realities. So you know, if you have questions about it, you can email us, or if you have a good experience using it, or challenges working through it, we're always available to help you. But it really is just meant to be a helpful resource to you. And with that, I'm going to invite Nick Carlson to lead us in our second sort of reflection for this meeting.
Right on. Well, thanks, Kevin. Thanks, Chelsea, too, and the team for preparing that piece. I'm Nick Carlson. Kevin mentioned I have the Lifelong Formation guy in Vicariat III now, previously Vitality and Vicariat V. Greetings to my Vicariat V friends, by the way. It's good to see you. So anyhow, I, I'm really glad to be able to present today. We're doing, we're trying to get a building the new reality segment sort of in the town halls, right, in each month. And so this month, we, funnily enough, we're looking at evangelization, the priority of evangelization and catechesis. And it's funny, when I thought of going through this theme, I thought, oh, I should go straight to the directory. And I didn't plan this with Chelsea, but as it turns out, Chelsea gave a great introduction to a lot of what I'm about to say, because I wanted to kind of help us to situate ourselves in order to have a conversation with each other, more than anything, around three particular terms. The goal of my 15 minutes or so that I have is not that I'm going to talk to you for 15 minutes, but really to give us some kind of parameters to have a conversation with each other. I'd rather, I'd rather each one of us be able to learn from each other than try to suggest that we're all going to learn from me in these moments. So just, I will speak for a couple of minutes, and then towards that end, I'll break us up into smaller groups so that we can just reflect together and benefit from the experience that each person brings to these meetings. So so right at the outset, Chelsea mentioned already that the directory encourages us to look at this great and overarching mission of the church. And she framed it well. She said that it also brings this into an updated sort of Francis version, right? Because the directory is under previous administrations or papacies, we could say. It has been heavy on the doctrinal piece and heavy in that way, pedagogy and so forth. And not that we, you know, not that we have, you know, neglected it, but Pope Francis is trying to raise up that greater awareness, right? Particularly, he wants us to reflect in this directory on that sort of relationship dynamic between evangelization and catechesis. So rather than give a talk or a reflection on these ideas, which any of you who are participating could also do, I'd rather just situate us in this conversation around our intentionality around these three concepts, the charigma, evangelization, and catechesis. I think we can make some distinctions between them, and also that will help us to make a greater, to understand the association. I think also that the, we can easily be tempted to make distinctions that are more that are more, that we can regard as more real than they actually are, because there is such a tight, a tight relationship between these three things. So in order to do this, I thought that, because I was reading through the directory, I thought, oh, this makes sense to go back to Evangelia Gaudium, which I still used to buy paper books back then. So I have a copy. The directory I have on Kindle, that's also on the Kindle store, by the way, if you guys haven't gotten it yet. So the directory in its preface makes reference to two numbers particularly from Evangelia Gaudium. I'm going to read a substantial portion of it. And I think we'll start to see some of the highlights of the two, the three different terms that I'm looking for, for our conversation. So it's number 164 and 165. This is in the, the section in chapter three around even evangelization and a deeper understanding of the charigma. So I'm just going to read it through. Bear with me. I know it's a lot, but I think there's, there's some, there's a lot to glean from these passages. In catechesis II, Pope Francis says, "We have rediscovered the fundamental role of the first announcement, or charigma, which needs to be the center of all evangelizing activity and all efforts at church renewal." So there's the pastoral program of Cardinal Glaze, right? "The charigma is trinitarian. The fire of the spirit is given in the form of tongues and leads us to believe in Jesus Christ, who by his death and resurrection reveals and communicates to us the Father's infinite mercy." This is great. The, we get this kind of capsule of the charigma itself in that line, right? "On the lips of the catechists, the first proclamation must ring out over and over, Jesus Christ loves you. He gave his life to save you, and now he is living at your side every day to enlighten, strengthen, and free you. This first proclamation is called first, not because it exists at the beginning, and then can be forgotten or replaced by other more important things. It is first in a qualitative sense, because it is the principal proclamation." This is why we, we turn to that process of the catechumenate. And all of us, when we think about evangelization, think back to our experience, too. Because it's the beginning of our Christian journey, but not in a sense that we leave it aside. It's a fruitful moment that constantly becomes present again and again in our encounter with God and constantly bearish fruit in our life. "It is first in a qualitative sense, one, the principal proclamation, one which we must hear again and again in different ways, the one which we must announce one way or another throughout the process of catechesis at every level and every moment. And for this reason, too, the priest, like every other member of the church, ought to grow in awareness that he himself is continually in need of being evangelized." You can insert here, the catechist, right, is constantly, or the CL, constantly in need, right, of being evangelized, each one of us, the diocesan employee, right, the cardinal, okay? "We must not think that in catechesis the charigma gives way to a supposedly more solid formation. Nothing is more solid, profound, secure, meaningful, and wisdom-filled than that initial proclamation. All Christian formation consists of entering more deeply into the charigma, which is reflected in and constantly illumines the work of catechesis, thereby enabling us to understand more fully the significance of every subject which the latter treats." And he goes on and on, and it's very rich. If you, if you want to take this, take this and reflect on it, too, in, on your own. So really, if we can just make those distinctions then, right? The charigma as the first proclamation, right, that Chelsea was talking about, which is very much directed towards encounter, and it's sort of a gateway or an opening to the relationship, the dynamic of faith in someone's life, that that changes everything. So it's the total watershed. Evangelization, then, as a way of, you could say, making present and announcing Jesus Christ. You can think of the charigma, sort of the vehicle, or the goal of evangelization is to bring that charigma obviously to people who haven't heard it, but also to everyone that has heard it, and to give it, give it to them in a fresh way, give it to us in a fresh way. And then how wonderful is this? Catechesis proclamation, right, as the essential dimension of every moment of catechesis. And the catechesis develops this initial moment and brings it to maturity, forming believers for mission. So I wanted to just make those sort of distinctions to be able to recognize, not because, I think because we can be tempted to to differentiate, or you may hear from some people that catechesis is not evangelizing. But I wanted first of all to affirm each one of you, and thank you for the evangelizing ministry that you carry out, because I think that it's, because it's such an essential part of this sort of ongoing formation, or ongoing encounter, there's no replacement for that deepening that takes place. And when we make the distinction between evangelization and catechesis, it's not, it's not to separate the two, right? But it's really just to help to understand sort of what's, what's the core element of each, and how the two are connected, and how the charigma, you know, kind of permeates every, every aspect of that. So as I say, this can be something that, that gets So as I say, this can be something that gets us excited and I want to go on and on about it. But really, the goal was to have us talk about it together. So if we think of it, if we think of our ministries and think of our parishes and the things that we carry out in the name of Jesus, I'd like us to reflect in these, in smaller groups. What, how does this evangelizing ministry play out in the parish at large? Or you can think if you're, if you're working for Office of Lifelong Formation, how does it work out at the office? Or at my home parish, either one, you can take a pick. And then concretely, how does it play out in, in my ministry particularly? Another way of looking at it, too, how are we affirming the vocation, the call to missionary discipleship in, for ourselves and for those that we work with, and then, of course, those that we minister to? So I will give us five minutes, if you will allow me, and we will come right back. Please talk through those questions and then we'll have a very brief recap at the end. Okay? It didn't give us the option to opt out of being recorded. Okay, that's fine. Thanks, guys, for doing this. I appreciate it. I want to take just a couple of minutes to give any standout things. I had a couple of thoughts, too. Are there any, are there any things that came up that you, that you would want to make sure to share with the big group? How is your parish living out the, the call to evangelization? How is your ministry, religious education, youth ministry, however it is, living out the call to evangelization? You can type it in, too. Thank you, Rachel, for putting that in. Rachel says here, this came up, maybe of interest, is your faith still in kindergarten? Oh, this is a great conversation starter as a line. I haven't seen this video, but that's a great point, right? How, how, how developed is our faith, right? What else comes to mind? Were there any standout points? If not, I can add a couple of things, too.
We just talked in our group about how this document is very timely and helping us, the directory of catechesis document, and just how we begin to see that as we move through this and building the new reality, it's multifaceted, right? So it's not just talking about walking with the person in front of you. It's about walking, them walking with other groups. And it's, I had summarized that I've been looking for the actual document where Pope Francis says evangelization evangelizes the evangelizer. And I can't find it. I think it's a, it's a summary of what he said in multiple documents. But I felt that, that 164 really summarized that and helped us to see just how much multi-dimensional our task is.
Thanks, Dolly. I appreciate that. What else? If you're in O L F, too, you can pipe in. Let's forget for us, too. Now let's see here. Okay. We'll pipe in if you, if you don't. I was going to say a couple of things that I, that I've seen when, when we are a little more intentional around living, living this in our, in our ministries and in our parishes, just a couple of characteristics that stand out. And you guys can say whether this is true or not. These are just suggestions. I think that when, when it is borne out, I heard a little bit in our small group and then also in Chelsea's talk earlier, there's, there's flexibility in the sense that we have an ability to adapt to where people are. Carrie was in our group, Carrie Farrell, from Evanston, I think, but I can't recall. Same area. So if I carry two, at any rate, and she was saying, too, that we get, we get people in all different situations. And one way that our sort of evangelization sensitive, sensitive, we are like spidey sense for evangelization is the ability to like adapt it, right, to where people are, adapt the message, adapt that proclamation. And similar to that, linked with that, I think, is individual attention, which is very challenging, right? And especially when we have, we were talking about another program that, that we have 30 new families all of a sudden because of the unification. And that's difficult to get to know people, but still, that sort of intentionality around trying to spend the time, not only with the kids, but also with the parents, if you can. That's the same sort of thing where we can begin to really adapt it to the measure that that's going to receive it, right? Another thing I've noticed that that kind of characterizes when, when our catechesis, our formation is intentionally charismatic and evangelizing is that we create or we engineer charismatic experiences. So obviously, you, you all do this very well. So I'm just kind of pointing out what I've noticed. You, you have classroom instruction, but you also have the, the moment of encounter that you can create. And sort of even if it's not the first timeline wise for people, it can be a first in terms of revisiting the priority, right, of that curricula. Each one of our students, wherever they are, are in need of coming to hear this message again and again. And just like each one of our catechists are, and just like each one of us is, right? Another thing that I heard when we were, when we were chatting just now, and it reminded me, too, is you'll see, you'll see that sometimes that that process is similar to our C A A, especially when we're talking about sort of being, being incorporated more deeply into the body of Christ. So that it's not, it's not something where we're just trying to get people through, but we really are trying to help people to deepen in their own awareness. How that manifests itself is in myriad ways that you all know. And then the last thing I was going to point out is that it brings us to mission. And so it's like that, you know, my cup overfloweth, right? When, when we hear, when we hear the message of Jesus Christ, when we, when we really do sort of accept or understand or begin to believe in how close he really is, it can't, it can't remain there. And that paragraph 164 talks about how the Holy Spirit gives us fire and gives us the language to be able to bring that to others, gives us desire, too, that reflects the desire and the thirst of our Lord. We were talking a little bit, Brian and I, yesterday about how like Cantala Mesa uses that image of the 99 and the one. Sort of nowadays, how we have, we have the one that's in catechesis, but then there's the 99 out there. And it's, it is like that and it isn't. I think all of the people that we deal with are the lost sheep, right, in one way or another, in ourselves and the catechists, catechists we help. So how can we like engineer and create those moments so that people can, can come to deeper identify and recognize their own call, not in virtue of something that's external to them, but something that's deeply internal to them? So that's what I had for our theme today. Thank you very much for participating. And thank you for the insights that you, that you sent along, too. And a couple of great points here in the, in the chat came up to Alpha mentioned that, or sorry, Angela mentioned that Alpha was introductory sort of weighed in that can lead us into resources. And there are other resources, once you get in, to be able to deepen in that experience, not only as a, not only deepening the first encounter, but then deepening the ability to convey that for others. So Kevin pointed out, too, I'm sorry, this was also pointed out by Angela, sharing our stories when we share how we have experienced the curricula, the good news, right, in our own life. Others become curious. Doesn't that sound familiar, like inspiring witness? Have you guys heard that line before? Okay, I'm done rambling. Thank you very much. I appreciate the ministry that each one of you carries out. And God bless you.
Thank you, Nick. And since the topic of the song came up, Emily has graciously put information about that song in the chat. So if you want to revisit that for your reflections, Brian, you can listen. YouTube link on there. So the last part of our town hall, if it's needed, is always a question and answer. If you have any kind of burning questions, either about anything we discussed or just in general, something you want to know from your lifelong formation team, we have that opportunity right now. If there's anything on your mind, that's kind of how we'll close our time today. So does anybody have anything to ask that you would like to ask in front of the larger group or would think would be helpful to clarify or get information on?
I just heard Faith Hub come up and I just looked it up. It looks like it's an archdiocesan movement. I don't think I'd ever heard of it. If somebody has any experience with using that, I'd love to hear what they're doing with it.
Can I nominate Maureen Williams to talk about what it is? She is deeply involved in Faith Hub, a leader on the Faith Hub. So Maureen, could you give us a little overview?
Well, first of all, I'd love to. Thank you, Kevin. And there's a lot of folks on the call who are very involved, so they can either correct me or add on, I hope. But I'm delighted you asked, because the Faith Hub is two years old. It started at the height of the pandemic. And what its intent and whole purpose is to identify, create or envision ways to support evangelization or parishes. And then based on success, share it with parishes to use. So anything the Faith Hub creates, and then I'll give you details of what it has, is available to all parishes. And what I like to think of it as an incubator, if you will, or a lab where we say, okay, what is needed and what can work? So as an example, Faith Hub is, has five main pillars that it focuses on. You know, and one of them is growth. So it might be an entry point. So Alpha, we do a lot of Alphas. If there's any parish there that wants to do Alpha, doesn't know how to get started, talk to us. Or obviously, your LOC PVC is your great first contact and they know everything about it. But the Faith Hub can help you. If you say, I don't have the resources, join one of the Faith Hub Alpha sessions and have your parishioners join it. We can keep track of it. We'll do all the online administrative work for you. We'll host it. And we right now have several parishes represented within the Archdiocese. And we'll even tell you who's registered, how often they attended, and be able to give you all the metrics. Not confidential data, but you know, who attended and all the rest. Because some parishes just don't have the technical skill or bandwidth to do it. If you want to experience Alpha and you're trying to figure out, hey, would this work in our parish? Get four of your folks to attend to Alpha and we can get them to go through as an intact group. Then you might say, hey, you know, Alpha's really working well. You can do it in person or online. But what's next? We're using the program Chosen, recalling and following Jesus. But it's for those of you familiar with Chosen. And what we do is they get together, watch a video, then discussion, facilitate discussion, discussion guide, et cetera. Then after that, you might say, I want to learn more about the church, the Catholic church. We have a number of people through Alphas, through the Faith Hub, who have started to be interested in becoming Catholic. And we have two that are going to be baptized just this Easter, who started in our Alpha programs. But Nick, Nick runs, rooted in the church. And, you know, Nick, you can talk about that if you want, but it's like, hey, what is, you know, what is it to be Catholic? What does it mean? And it's a, is it six weeks, Nick, your program, or five, six?
We did eight this time, yeah.
Oh, there you go. And I did the original pilot and now you've done it significantly.
Well, there's just so much content to go through. But there was also, you know, there's a couple of other offerings, too. And, and like that are more, more broadly Christian, you could say, like getting to know the creed that way, right? And so these are all just great opportunities that we can take to, you know, like the Faith Hub doesn't aspire to be anything other than a great resource for, for each one of the parishes, right? And the good news is that it's free, right, for you guys to use, right?
So it's all part, it's part of the build the new reality. And it, I also handle donor relations. So we look for donations from people who really believe they want to see things done. Like what's new? What's different? What can we test? What can we actually make happen? And so the idea is, you know, no parish pays for anything. We'll give it to you completely free and it's all part of the Archdiocese anyway. And quite frankly, now we're getting quite a few requests from other Diocese. We've just sent all our chosen stuff to Texas, New York is using it, Buffalo, New York. They're, they're coming out of the woodwork because people are desperate for good stuff and easy to administer, like whether it's a video discussion, here's the leader's guide, you can go forth and do it. So anyway, I'll stop there, but hopefully that gives you a little taste of it. But I encourage everybody to what Javier, thank you Javier, put in the chat, the Faith Hub website, and you'll see the pillars. You can, there's a 430 mass that's praise and worship. We're testing praise and worship music to see if it responds to a different group. Some parishes have tried it, not all. Nick's been instrumental in it and is even talking about creating a consortium of praise and worship ministers, so we can start supporting each other better. Am I right, Nick? Don't, I mean, where you looked, I thought I misspoke, but.
Yeah, there's, there's some things in the works.
We got a lot of ideas that we're trying to say, how do we support people better?
Yeah. Dolly asked a good question. Is there a calendar to access when things are starting? That's, that would be something that, that I don't.
It's right there.
Yeah, on the website, I believe it comes up. Needless to say, we're excited about it. So, but yeah.
Yeah. So how did I do, Kevin? Did I give enough or too much?
Great. That's why I deferred to you. I knew you would do the thorough job. Yeah. So like Maureen said, your lifelong formation coordinator also can get connect, you connected with information about, you know, what you can utilize from the Faith Hub and how you might get involved. There was a couple of questions from the chat. I just wanted to have people note that, yes, Faith Hub is an archdiocesan program. It's part of the Building the New Reality team of Renew My Church. So it's intimately involved with the Renew My Church process run by the Archdiocese. And then side question, that has nothing to do with Faith Hub, about Holy Fire. Yes, Holy Fire is every other year at this point. So we're going to do this fall because it keeps us alternating with N C Y C and that allows you to not have to use resources for both in the same year. So after fall 2022, we won't have Holy Fire again until 2024. So, and that will be the standard going forward. And then that also addresses the concern that in the two-year confirmation prep, your, your candidates will only have to go once, you know, as part of their, or if you're making, if you're taking advantage of that as an important moment in their, in their preparation process, they would go once as part of their preparation process, not two years in a row. Are there other questions?
Can I add one thing, Kevin?
Go for it.
Just want to make sure everyone knows, anything the Faith Hub does is synced with the Office of Lifelong Formation. And we all, and Kevin, Todd Williamson and everybody meets like once a month, where we all meet together to make sure we're all in sync. So that I do want you to know it's all integrated. So this is not a separate entity, as Kevin was saying, but heavily synced with the people of each of those DPVM departments sitting in on what the Faith Hub is doing.
So I see there's a question on where to access the calendar. What I can do is I can find the more direct group from the Faith Hub website and put that in the email we send out to everybody. So you have, you can find where to find that calendar for Faith Hub.
Yeah. You can also sign up and get like the updates for when the courses are coming, that kind of thing. But that would be something that we probably should, should adapt on the site to make it more clear.
Are there any other burning questions? These were good. Thank you for asking.
If there's no other questions, I might jump in really quick, because I see Matt Too Hill over here. And made me think, we have our Thrive event coming up this weekend for youth ministers and their volunteers. So if you haven't registered for that yet, it's totally free. Why I mentioned Matt Too Hill is they're hosting it for us at St. Francis of Assisi in Olin Park. We had our first one more on the north side in March and it went well. It was great to see youth ministers gathered in person. And then the second one's this weekend. I'll put the flyer link in the chat again. But we, Chelsea and I would love to see some youth ministry faces in person there.
Thanks for that reminder, Emily. And what I heard is that the, the one we did a few weeks ago was really, really well received by the youth ministers. They really appreciated the event and the content. And so really found a lot of value in it. And I know that, you know, take that with a grain of salt, because we're promoting the event. But that was, we did do it once and people really did enjoy it. And the Thrive event, is it open to volunteers? Yes, right?
Yeah. So it's for youth ministers and their volunteers. So if you have volunteers that work with youth and youth ministry, it's kind of both rolled into one on this Saturday from 10:30 to 5:00.
Yes, anyone involved in youth ministry in any way, so confirmation coordinators, religious ed coordinators, pastors, associate pastors, where anyone who's vaguely interested in youth ministry, this would be a great event for you guys to come to. It's free and we're, we're buying you lunch, so.
All right, folks. So we have about a minute left. We'll close in, I'll lead us in a prayer and then let you go on your day. So if we can all discenter ourselves, we'll close in the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit. Good and gracious God, thank you for the people gathered here. Thank you for their ministries, their commitment, their willingness to journey with us and to reflect today, especially on their ministries and the task of evangelization. We just are ever grateful to be invited into this ministry and more importantly, invited to know you, to grow deeper in relationship with you and to share and witness that relationship that we have with you, with the people whom we serve in our parishes and other ministries. Amen. Amen. In the name of the Father and of the Son and the Holy Spirit. All right, everybody. God bless. Let us know if you need anything and have a great day.
Thanks, guys. God bless you.
Thank you.